Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 6, 2008, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Council members Najarian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Eusephian?
Here.
Mayor Draymond?
Here. Tonight's flag salute is led by Councilmember Eusephian.
Please stand and face the flag.
Put your hand on your arm. Read after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Four hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred American dead, ten million seven hundred thousand Soviet dead, another three hundred thousand dead from the United Kingdom, another two hundred and eighty thousand dead from France. Over seventy-three million people total would perish between the years of 1938 to 1945 in the cause to rid the world of the Nazi Party and its policies. On May 7th and 8th, 1945, all over Europe, in England, in the U.S., and everywhere else, quite honestly, in the world, they celebrated VE Day, Victory in Europe Day. One of the landmarks in our new town center project, on brand, is a replica of a statue of the one that is in Normandy, France, entitled "Spirit of American Youth," and has been depicted in many pictures, in the news press, and everywhere else. And this statue, the original, was dedicated to those Americans who sacrificed so much for the cause of freedom, who volunteered to fight because they knew the cause was just. Tonight, on the 63rd anniversary of VE Day, I ask that we pray for our nation's surviving World War II veterans, and those who answer the call of duty here at home, in our factories and mills, on air and land and sea, who kept giving when it seemed they could give no more, all for the preservation of our way of life and universal freedom and liberty everywhere. May their example of selfless sacrifice always shine as a beacon for us to follow during times when we are short on hope and wander lost. We pray for the souls of those who died, and for those who lived, and for everyone who served. Amen.
Mr. City Clerk, we have the report, please.
The agenda for the May 6, 2008, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 1, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And may we go to the next item?
At 3 is presentation and appointments. At 3 is agenda preview for the meeting of May 13, 2008.
Thank you. I guess we'll go to John Tucktow.
Thank you, Mr. Draymond. Mayor Draymond, members of council, next week, we start at 8:30 with a budget study session, where the Acting Director of Finance will provide an overview of the current budget, forecast, and schedule for discussion of the 2008-2009 budget. There are no items on the Glendale Housing Authority Agenda. The Glendale redevelopment Agency does have one business agenda, and that is a public hearing on assigned variance for property located at 2148 Glendale Galleria. There will also be a joint City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting. The Director of Development Services will be writing an agenda report on the restructuring of the Alex Regional Theater Art Board with Glendale Arts. And finally, moving on to the City Council Agenda, there are a number of consent items. The City Clerk obviously has the approval of the minutes. Acting Director of Libraries will provide a report on the Casa Verdugo Branch Library Design and Space Plan. The Director of Parks and Recreation has a number of reports. The first is a proposed grant application to the Los Angeles Regional Park in Open Space District. The second is a landscape maintenance of GWP Fire and General Government Contract Facilities Report. The third is a report on the transfer of funds within Parks Services Account, and finally, a report on the bid results for the Playground Equipment Replacement Project. There's also three action items. The City Treasurer will provide a report on the quarterly investment review as of March 31st, 2008, and the City Manager's Office will have two reports. One is regarding the policy for city government access channel GTV-6, and the last is for GTV-6 work plan.
Thank you, Mr. Tucktow. Mr. City Clerk, can I have your next item?
At 3 V is a presentation of the mayor's trophy award for most outstanding city entry in the 2008 Rose Parade.
With that, let's go to Director of Parks, George Chapchan.
Thank you, Mayor Draymond, and members of the State Council. Thank you for letting us do this presentation. Real briefly, I would like to call up C.L. Keating, past president of the 2008 Rose Float and Tournament of Roses President. As you know, this is four out of five years that we've won a trophy, and he is here to present this to you, the mayor, and the City Council.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. As the president of the 2008 Rose Parade, it was a great privilege and pleasure of mine to have a theme of passports of world celebrations. And I'd like to thank the City of Glendale for your participation, because without cities such as yours and other participants who are willing to do the financial sacrifice and the time to put a float in the Rose Parade, the Rose Parade would not be the worldwide event that it is every year. So I would like to thank you for that. I'd also like to introduce my wife, Adrian, who traveled with me as we spent 120 days of last year traveling around the world, visiting the different bands that participated in the parade. So I think we had a terrific parade this year that really epitomized the theme, and your float, of course, of the plane taking off is quite a lot of early mornings throughout the year. So on behalf of the Tournament of Roses, Bon Voyage, winning the mayor's trophy, I'd like to present this trophy picture to you and the City Council of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I will come right down there. I want to make you draw this picture. This is terrific. This is wonderful. I know everyone at home watching can see this. If we can pick that up, I know the council is familiar with it. There you go. Let's see. There we are.
Thank you so much. Thank you again. I thought City Council took a lot of time, but 120 days traveling, wow. A lot of fun.
Well, I do want to thank you. That is one of the, not only fun, but terrific and rewarding and things that we do here at the city, and also, it's absolutely great for the morale and community spirit of the city. And they're coming to take us away right now, you can hear. Shall we go on to the next item?
At 3 C is presentation of the check to the city by the Glendale Rose Float Association for the 2008 float entry.
Once again, Mayor Draymond, the city does invest $90,000 a year in the float, and we do contract out with Phoenix Floats, and we've had a great working relationship with them. And as part of the agreement with the Rose Float Association, they have agreed to pay for half of the float on an annual basis, and they are here today. Jim Sokoloff, Joyce Sokoloff, Sean Bursell from the Rose Float Association, Kathy Levkowitz is here, and Bill Carnahan is here as well, to present the city with a check for $45,000.
Wow. Well, for a check of that size, I think I'm going to ask one of my stronger colleagues to come down there and receive it. If I could ask Mr. Weaver if you wouldn't mind?
I can't cash that.
Doesn't matter if you can cash it. We don't want you to cash it. We want you, we want you to accept it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Sean Bursell. I'm Vice President of the Glendale Rose Float Association. In addition to the members that were mentioned, we also have Jim Canfield from the association with us, and we're very pleased to present this check for $45,000 to the city, and this represents half the cost of the 2008 float that you just saw there. And this money comes from dues paid by citizens of Glendale to the Rose Float Association, other donations, a raffle that we have for one of the seats on the float, an auction that we have for other seats on the float, and of course, the very popular Dreaming of Roses event held every September. So the community comes together to fund this float. So it really is a community activity. As you mentioned, it really brings the community together and celebrates Glendale and the city that we all love. In addition to the monetary contributions that citizens make, the members of the community decorate the float. And there were 355 decorators on that float that you saw there earlier, and they donated 3,294 hours to decorating that float. So it's a major undertaking in addition to raising the funds for the float. So we're very pleased how the members of the community that is Glendale have come together to support this effort. So I'm very pleased to present this check to the city.
Thank you very much, Sean. And Joyce, would you like to say a few words while you're? No. Well, thank you anyway. Thank you all for coming. That is, we are happy to accept a check for $45,000. So thank you very, very much. We look forward to another award-winning float. Mr. City Clerk, let's move on to the next item.
Item number four, Mr. Mayor and Council, the City Council and Staff Comments.
Do I have any? Mr. Weaver?
Everybody is commenting on the Americana opening. Couple of things that I found out, we were wondering what effect it would have on Mid Brand. And as today, we had Outback here, wait was, what, an hour to get in? They were loaded. There were people. Damon's Restaurant did way more than they ever have done. Arneente, which is quiet on Friday and Saturday, were jammed, people standing outside. Portos Baker, which always crowded, was even more crowded. DJs had long waits, almost ran out of food. And Mayor, you told me up in Montrose, Taste of Montrose, was 16,000 people there, maybe more than usual. We do know that Rick Russo on Channel 11 was plugging Montrose, another part of Glendale, and people out of visit. So maybe some took up on it. So if it holds, of course, it's the break-in time, but if this is a trend, what's going to happen for Glendale? Remember, we never got any marketing like we got for the last couple of weeks with the Americana. People that never even knew that Glendale existed came to Glendale. As I said on KNX Radio, I used to say when friends came to Glendale, "Where can we go?" And I'd say, "We can go to Forest Lawn." That's all we had. Now we can say we have the Americana. Well, Burbank has beautiful downtown Burbank. Pasadena has Old Town. We got the Americana. So it looks like it's going to be pretty good. The rest, everybody's heard us talk. An item on the crowds that were in there. Oh, yeah. Cheesecake told me they did 2,800 meals on Friday, 3,300 meals on Saturday. Just absolutely phenomenal. Restaurants running out of money and having to replenish their food four times over. So now, somebody said this afternoon, we had 400,000 people there this weekend.
That's a lot of cheesecake.
Yeah. Well, they weren't all in cheesecake, but 400,000 people, that's twice the population of Glendale. Were in there.
That means they ran around the place twice when they came back here.
Oh, is that it?
Any other councilor staff comments? Mr. Seifian?
Thank you very much. I want to repeat some of the comments that my colleague made, all true, with exception of where you go before. So I didn't go there. Nevertheless, I think the issue of Americana is, we all had an opportunity to go to the opening of the Americana. There's this little pesky rule, some people think it's pesky, I think it's great. It's FPPC regulations, which says we cannot accept gifts over $390. And everybody who attended the Americana's gala evening was handed a bag. Each bag was worth about $200. And since I attended with my wife, that made it $400, plus the meal, which put us over the limit, which makes it illegal for us to accept even the things. Forget about making it impossible for us to vote for anything that Mr. Russo in future would need for the next year. Therefore, based on the city attorney's recommendation, as the City Clerk, I am relinquishing one of the bags. And I also took some stuff out of the bag and put it on this one, so now I am below $390. And so I'm giving it to the city.
You don't look like you weigh an ounce over 175.
I'm giving it to the city, not the City Clerk. So I don't want him to end up having a problem. So I relinquished it to the city according to the document that our city attorney gave. But it was a very nice event, and I think, as I said in the paper, I want you to go to the Americana, walk around, enjoy it, have a great time. It's a fantastic place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any, Mr. Quintero?
I hadn't planned on commenting, but yeah, I'll be relinquishing my bag also. And for the life of me, I can't understand how it's worth $200, but whatever.
Hey, come to the club. You did it, I.
Very expensive paper.
Yeah. And then, actually, I forgot, I attended my first Airport Commission meeting. We had an excellent discussion, including a number of closed-session items. Very excited about serving on the Airport Commission. And I want to thank you. I think the council members chose the most qualified candidate. I appreciate that.
Which committee you ended up in?
Operations Committee, so we'll be hiring a new executive director.
Okay. Were there any other comments? Okay. Mr. City Clerk, let's move on to the next item.
Item five is consent items. This is including the minutes. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting a separate consideration may do so by making such request for a motion as proposed.
Mr. Eusephian?
Move consent.
Second.
Okay. I have no cards. Mr. City Clerk, let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi. Hi.
Eusephian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, as listed, is oral communications. Discussion is limited in time, is not part of this agenda. I could go on, but I think I'll turn it over to you instead.
Yes, let me just to remind everyone, even though oral communication sits on this spot, it's described on our agenda, we will be taking oral communications at the end of the agendized items, but at this time, we will hear from those who have liked to speak to us about events. I think we do have more.
Mr. Mayor? Leon? Do you have an event you'd like to announce? Three minutes?
This would be the time. You have three minutes, Mr. Mayor. Isn't that strange? I call him Mr. Mayor, and he calls me Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Would you like to?
Members of council, my name is Leon Mayor, and I'm here on behalf of the library and the forensic of Glendale Library to announce our next event, which is on May 28th, which is a Wednesday, and we're going to have a lady by the name of Lori Vieira Rigler, who will talk about Jane Austen. Jane Austen was a famous author from the 19th century, an English author. She's written six famous novels. Two of them became famous movies in our country, Pride and Prejudice and Sense and Sensibility. Some of you remember that. In any event, the author, Lori Rigler, her book is called The Confessions of a Jane Austen Addict. And before I tell you a little bit about the book, and I'm not going to tell you too much about the book, Ms. Rigler went to University of New York in Buffalo. She received a bachelor's degree. Her major was classics. Since that time, she did work with movies and writing stories. She was in the Hollywood area. She's given lectures all over. And she became a Jane Austen fan. She became addicted to being a Jane Austen fan. And in writing the book, Confessions of a Jane Austen Addict, she's taken you back to the 19th century by her own journalistic manipulations, and she tells a very interesting story. I don't know how many people are interested or will be interested in Jane Austen, but for those who have some interest, please come to the library. And if we generate enough interest for this special program, Chuck Wyke is going to serve tea at the library for all those who attend. Can I have a minute, Your Honor, to mention something else that's been on my mind?
As long as you don't call me Your Honor, you are.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I saw the Alex Theater genocide celebration, or not the celebration, but the honoring of the genocide. And when a Jewish-American mayor talked about the genocide, the Holocaust, Darfur at the Glendale Alex Theater, it took me back a few years beyond before I became associated with the library. Most of you don't know it because you're too young, but I was the deputy district attorney in charge of the Glendale Burbank area in 1960. In 1964, I ran for Congress from this district. It was unsuccessful, but I did have a participation in politics. Sometime thereafter, I moved my family to Glendale in 1975, so I've been here to watch Glendale grow. And Glendale has grown over the years. It's grown to the extent that it has a very diverse society here, and a very tolerant and understanding society. And I'd like to believe that the Glendale Library and our particular program has had something to do with this growth. And in that sense, I'm proud to be here on behalf of the library, who takes care of 2,500 to 3,000 people a day, and some of the programs we've had at the library, which I believe are not based on diversity, but lend to the diversity and tolerance we've had here in Glendale, which have grown. And again, I've seen the growth of Glendale. And one thing in particular sticks out in my mind, because if I start talking about some of our programs, about the genocide, this, that, and so forth, I'll be here all night. So I'm going to make this very quick and precise.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
There was one program we had about a year ago. We had somebody by the name of Valentino Achthang Deng. He was a survivor of Darfur. And he wrote the book along with Dave Eggers, a famous American journalist, and he came to the library and talked about his book, which was a New York Times bestseller called What Is the What? And what is important is not only his appearance at the library, but the fact that in the course of researching what was done and what was happening in Darfur, we found out that the Armenian community here, through Father Voskin's church, had gone to Darfur and done things there positively in Darfur. The All Saints Episcopal Church in Pasadena, who also attended our event, had been to Darfur and done things positively there. And that the Jewish community had also done things, were raising money and done things in Darfur. And all these people were there at the time we had this event with the black African survivor of Darfur. So I can't help thinking that we have been moving forward in a lot of directions, and I'm very proud of what we're doing at the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have come a long way in the city, that is for sure. All right. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item under action items, 8A is Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Regarding Design for Glendale's Entry in the 2009 Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade. At 8A1 is motion approving sneak preview as Glendale's entry in the 2009 Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade.
Mr. Chapchan?
Mayor Draymond, thank you very much. If approved by the City Council, the 120th Tournament of Roses Parade on January 1, 2009, will mark Glendale's 95th float entry, second longest participation in the parade's history. Glendale's rose floats have won 50 major awards since then, including 12 sweepstakes awards for the most float entries in the parade. The 2009 theme for the parade is hats off to entertainment. And the 2009 float entry, which is called sneak preview, will depict a movie premiere at the Alex Theater, and I have Bill Loftaus here, who will come up and talk a little bit about the float design itself. The cost of the float, as you know, is about, this year it will be about $94,000. The cost was increased a little bit with the anticipated help again from the Rose Float Association of $45,000 for the float. This design went to the Parks and Rec Commission on April 2nd, and was approved by the Parks and Rec Commission, and we come before you to ask for approval for this part design. And what I'd like to do is, if you don't mind, call Bill Loftaus up, so we can at least describe the float, you know, the size of it, the height. And Bill and his team designers from Phoenix Floats have designed this float. Bill?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilman. It's great to come up here, you know. You've won four of the last five years. I don't have to back up, creep in, sneak in, and be, you know, I still want to be humble about it, never take it for granted. There are other cities that would give their left arm to have the prize record. Everybody wants to win. If you're going to enter, you want to win a prize. You want to be called a winner. And for years, I have been, I won't say the word criticized, but why can't we use the Alex Theater? Well, it didn't fit every year. Sure didn't fit last year. But boy, does it fit this year. So the float is the standard size it's always been. It's a 35-foot float. The difference this year, the tower is 26 feet tall. Now, on the marquee, it doesn't show, that is the sketch, this is the final rendering. On the marquee are some of the movies that appeared in the early years. One of them was National Velvet with Elizabeth Taylor, Going My Way with Ben Crosby, and the one you can't see but will see will be the one featuring John Wayne. Sneak preview. When they did the sneak preview, they blinked the light at the top of the Alex Theater. Well, we're going to install a strobe light, and the reason for the strobe light is during the daylight, you can see it. So we're going to have a lot of fun with it, and when we have a lot of fun and we enjoy building something, and something that fits the themes so well, it's really an enjoyable unit. We won't jam it up with as much people. This is for the art portion of it. We'll limit it so that it doesn't take away from the aesthetics of the float, and so on and so forth. You notice how this is set, very decal? You notice how the trays are set up? They'll all be filled with flowers, red carnations as a carpet, that type of thing. I think it's a great float, and through any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right. I see Mr. Eusephian had his hand up.
So Loftaus, I just want to say, you were always a class act. You always brought classy projects to us, and it is my privilege to move the item at 8A1. Go build it.
Do we have a?
Second.
Do we have any other comments? Okay. Shall we?
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eusephian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. And I thank you very much.
You know, and I thank you. I want you to know, we know you have a choice. You work with Phoenix, we work with you, and we never take that for granted. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
At AP is Director of Public Works Regarding Report on Memorandum of Understanding Agreement with the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority, LACMTA, to partially fund a transportation deputy position in support of the Board of Director. At B1 is motion authorizing City Manager to execute three-year memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority for a transportation deputy position.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Euse.
I'd like to move the motion. I just want to let people know, I was not going to vote for this, because I thought he was going to get an aid, but actually, the reality is that if you read the staff report, we're just paying for our portion, so it's not just us alone. Everybody else is paying a portion of that, and it's not just for his aid either, so just kidding.
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Weaver?
And this is for the MTA?
Yes.
That built the Taj Mahal down in Los Angeles?
That built the Taj Mahal down in Los Angeles? I watched it being built. And that's the name of it. It's called Taj Mahal because it was taking all the ridership money and putting in to a glorified tower. I watched it being built. I just have trouble with them cutting roots out of Glendale, and then they come in and want money from us to support people. Now, am I misunderstanding this? The MTA is short on money, so it could be less.
Let me ask if our-
It's clearly to me.
Hello, excuse me, one second. Let me go to Mr. Zern, and then let me also ask our resident transportation mogul, council member who is also our representative, council member Najarian. Let's go to Steve Zern first.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Weaver. This is funding a position that assists in the representative for the person who represents us along with these other listed cities in this particular area. We've long participated in this funding or sharing of the funding of this position.
This is not a new thing.
No, this is not a new thing. I think the original MOU came out in 99, but even before that, if you remember, one, Mr. Zarian represented us on the MTA. We also partially funded a position at that time, so this is not anything new.
I don't need anything more. That's good. That's fine.
This will be well worth it. This deputy will assist currently myself and whoever holds the seat from the cities of the North County to fight for the transportation dollars, millions and millions that are at stake every year at the MTA. And it's well, the 11,000 that we're committing is well worth the investment. Certainly will bring dividends in the tens and perhaps hundreds of times that initial amount.
The clue was when Mr. Zern reminded me Larry Zarian also had a same position when he was there, so I'm okay.
Mr. Quintero.
So you're not using the spa at the Taj Mahal then?
That was the nickname for it.
I don't know any spa.
You have not been given the key?
Not been given the key to the spa.
All right. Mr. So we have a motion and a second. Did we get a second?
Yes, you did.
We did. All right, let's call roll.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Move on to the next item.
A.A. C. is city manager regarding consideration of a resolution supporting Assembly Bill 2669 introduced by Assembly Member Paul Krikorian to address speeding on residential streets. At C. one is a resolution supporting Assembly Bill 2669 introduced by Assembly Member Paul Krikorian.
Okay. We have a motion on this first.
Yes, I move A.A. C. one.
Back.
Motion and a second. Before I go to public, let me just mention to my colleagues that we do have a representative from Assemblyman Krikorian's office here with us in case you have any questions.
Oh, is there a party after this council meeting? We're moving so fast.
Well, we're not there yet, Mr. Weaver, so-
That's true, that's true.
So we don't want you to leave your glass slipper anywhere yet, sir. Okay.
Thank you. I'm here, and Councilmember John Hisrick on behalf of Assemblymember Krikorian simply here to answer questions if you have them about this bill, which was drafted with the advice of the CHP and the support of law enforcement generally across the state, including the Glendale Police Department. Appreciate your consideration of this motion.
Absolutely. Do we have questions? Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Hisrick, for coming down. As you know, I asked for this to come before us to show support, and we do that on sometimes very local issues, sometimes on issues involving international trade and whatnot. But I think this is very pertinent to the city of Glendale with the speeding issues. I'm sure the Assemblyman was acutely aware of those problems. And what this does, if anyone wants the details of it, you are entitled to have four points on your ticket for a two-year period, six points for a three-year period, and eight points for a three-year period. The points, a run-of-the-mill traffic ticket, a moving violation will give you one point. This bill will add a second point to that traffic ticket if you're speeding 26 miles or more over the speed limit. So in essence, those people that are the bad habitual speeders at the high rate of speed will be losing their license from the DMV much sooner than if they remained under the existing system.
Right. So. It would be, for example, in a school zone, 25, you'd be going 51 miles an hour, which I think we would all concede is very excessive. On the freeway, it would have to be 96 miles an hour, which I think most of us would feel the same way. We appreciate your support.
Do you have any other comments before we vote on this? I want to thank you very much, and please thank Assemblyman Krikorian for us.
Thank you.
I do have one speaker, and that is Bill Weisman. And Mr. Weisman, while he's coming up, I want to remind you, he is our, I think, our newest member of the Traffic and Parking Commission as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city staff, and everybody watching out there. As Mayor Draymond just mentioned, I am the newest member of the Transportation and Parking Commission, and it is in that role that I appear tonight, although I'm only speaking for myself, I'm not authorized to speak for the entire commission. But I did want to let you know that, and I'm speaking to urge your support for the resolution supporting Assembly Bill 2669, although I suspect I may be preaching to the choir in that regard. Just wanted to let you know that a very high percentage of the people that appear before the commission are there because they are concerned specifically with the problem of excessive speeding on residential streets. And for a show and tell tonight, I brought my trusty Bushnell radar speed gun, which the manufacturer claims is accurate to within one mile per hour. And using this particular speed gun, although it's not a residential street, up where I live in far north Glendale, I have clocked traffic on Foothill Boulevard, which has a posted 40 mile-per-hour speed limit, on speeds in excess of 60 miles an hour. And anyone going that fast, whether it's a residential street or a larger transportation corridor like Foothill Boulevard, they are basically recklessly endangering the lives and safety of other citizens. And I think anyone exceeding the posted speed limit by 26 miles an hour richly deserves the increased penalties, if not more. So that was basically what I wanted to mention. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. I just, by the way, wanted to mention, Mr. Weisman gave me a note. He's been clocking the speed of this council meeting, and it is currently traveling at about 45 miles an hour.
That's twice as fast?
And we hope we don't get a ticket from the Assemblymen from the 43rd District in the process. Okay, I have no other-
There's a police captain standing there. He's ready to write you one.
I see.
Fast.
We don't have any other speaker cards. We have a motion and a second. Let's call a roll, please.
Councilmember Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. We move now to oral communications, and these are five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. This is the B.C. report on A.C. and ADA. Some of these items, we've already had discussed in the past. This is a report, actually, it's not a report, it's a complaint regarding bus number 32 back in August. This is a response to this. At the bottom, it says, "M.V. Transportation is concerned about our passengers and drivers running around in hot vehicles," and they're going to take the number 32 bus out of service. This was August of 2007. This is the bus number 32 dated 4/28/08. It says the A.C. doesn't work and the destination signs don't work. That's an American with disability requirement, destination signs are supposed to work. This is bus number 65 dated 4/28/08. Stop request sign. When you pull the wire and it's supposed to stop, let the driver know he wants to get off, that's also an ADA requirement. Also, this is a, this bus had speedometer and also the air conditioning that didn't work. That's my PowerPoint presentation, but I'd like to go over a couple of other issues. Bus number 65 was operating on route number three. That's in your neck of the woods. On the 30th, two days later, that bus was towed in from Foothill Boulevard because the accelerator didn't work. Buses were all messed up, okay? The 32 bus, which had no A.C. and destination sign, as Officer Kevin Dezon so aptly stated, is this because we have uneducated mechanics working on our buses? It was nine months since this thing was first reported until the 28th of this year. It still hasn't been repaired, from August of last year to the 28th of this month. The statement that was made by M.V. Transportation, I like to ask, is this simply an embellishment of M.V. Transportation, a fax? Or is this just a simple prevarication? The ADA watchdog came up with a report in Washington, D.C. about M.V. Transportation, about the access contract in Washington, D.C. And they were being sued by some people with disabilities. And M.V. Transportation came up with a very interesting statement, two statements. One was, we didn't know what our contract was supposed to say, mean. M.V. Transportation, I think, doesn't understand that they're supposed to keep these buses in working condition here in Glendale. They sure didn't understand it in Washington, D.C. The second situation is they said, how do we know a person who is visually impaired, we heart the heart, they can't find the bus? We don't know. Should we get out and pick them up and at least show them? They get paid for this operation. Don't you think it would be nice? And I know a taxi cab driver will come up to a spot and say, by the way, did you call for a cab? Lose money if you don't provide the services. So, gentlemen, I'm not here tonight to promote any individual contractor who's coming up for the bid on M.V. Transportation. I'm just trying to show you, everybody, the inability of our present contractor to provide services that they are obligated by the contract. And there are things in this issue that are nondiscriminatory. There are no options regarding the Americans with Disability Act. And Mr. Howard, I'm going to give you a copy of these DBIs. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Espirito. Rita Unikian, followed by Barry Allen.
Hi. My name is Rita Unikian. I have lived in Glendale since 1989. First of all, I am a single parent and have volunteered at the Glendale schools for 12 years. The reason of my concern is to ask the city councilor member to please, pretty please, consider looking into rent control, especially for all low-income residents in Glendale who are struggling to make a living. I have a handout that I needed to distribute to Glendale residents to sign and support my cause. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Barry Allen, followed by Nancy Kent. Mr. Allen, are you about to announce someone is running for city council?
Oh, that's an old one.
Oh, okay.
We believe in recycling.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Some people say that that's what oral communication is about, but-
Recycling. I don't read the news press either, so.
Gotcha.
I'm Barry Allen with Vanguardians. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, thanks to the Ralph M. Brown Act. And I did leave some envelopes for several of our council members, and I hope you understand those. And I do want to mention, because I keep getting calls, and so does the city clerk, this is the number to call, 243-1502, to get your copy of Vanguard. Now, there are several issues, and by the way, I am not going to the Americana for at least two months because Councilmember Weaver said, don't go for two months, so I'm not going. So I want you to know that. I haven't been sleeping well of late because of the threat of a lawsuit, a defamation lawsuit, by Councilmember Weaver. And it really concerns me because analyzing the entire thing, I can't see the city supporting Mr. Weaver in suing me for defamation. And I'm very surprised because the city is providing computers and things like that for him to do his research to sue me. And I think that's an abuse of his elected authority to use those particular computers to be able to do that. Now, I have checked, and I have a number of people in the city manager's office and in other offices that have shared that with me, and it's very disconcerting that a city elected official who is going to be suing on his own is allowed to use those resources. And I think at some point, the city attorney may have to share with him what can be used for his personal gain and what can't be. Now, basing some of the other issues, it was necessary for me to file another complaint with the authorities on Mr. Weaver's demeanor and the use of his campaign funds for legal defense. So I want you to know that that has been filed. We will be posting it very shortly. And we have included a number of additional items on our weekly Weaver Watch because we feel that Mr. Weaver does not provide a service to this community. He doesn't. I'm a constituent, and when Mr. Weaver sees me, he goes the other way. He won't look at me. When I call him, he wants to hang up the phone. I think there's a problem there. I am a constituent, one of 207,000 people. I need to be able to access my council members, and Mr. Weaver is one of them. I think there's a duty, once you've been elected to this office of council member, to be responsive to your constituents. I am a constituent. I enjoy a relationship with other council members who receive phone calls and discuss issues with me. I think that's great. And certainly, Mr. Weaver, I could be a resource to you as opposed to the relationship that you treat me. But I am waiting for the lawsuit. We're prepared for the lawsuit, and I would suggest that everyone on this dais, and some who aren't, also be prepared for that lawsuit. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguardians. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Nancy Kent.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale, and I would like to start by thanking Councilman Weaver for mentioning the legendary opulence of the MTA building. That is a concern to a lot of people, but of course, that did not happen on Councilman Najarian's watch that that building was approved. What I meant to speak- Um, what I'm, what I meant to speak about tonight was Proposition 98. A few weeks ago, I asked the council if it would be possible for Glendale's representative to the Metropolitan Water District to report on what Proposition 98 will do to public water projects. And at that time, I remember, I mentioned that some of the groups that were saying no on Prop 98 on the June ballot included the California Chamber of Commerce and the Sierra Club, and those groups do not always agree on things, so take note. Uh, since that time, Governor Schwarzenegger has also made a statement that he opposes Prop 98 because of, I believe because of what it will do to public water projects, and also the Metropolitan Water District is on the list of people that endorse a no vote on Prop 98. So, I'm wondering if it is possible to bring this, to bring a report before the council so the public would hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, let me just, uh, start in by saying, um, if we could, it would be nice to ask Mr. Rez, who is our representative to the Metropolitan Water Board, if he would like to come and give us a, an overview, uh, with regard to Prop 98. Again, I'm, I don't, I don't remember that, and so I'm sorry if it got lost in the shuffle, but we'll make sure that, um, that, uh, we get some information for you and for others. We can do that.
We'll follow up, Mr. Mayor, tomorrow.
Thank you. Um, comments from council members, Mr. Yusefian?
Uh, there was an issue raised by Mr. Espiritu about one bus that apparently had something wrong with it for about several months. Uh, could Steve answer that question, what seems to be the problem? Was there a part that was not available? Somebody just forgot about it? What is, what's the problem?
Mr. Merrick, Councilmember Yusefian, I can't, I can't give you an answer now, I don't know that that's, that's even the case of that, if, you know, we could have had a, a bus that had a repair problem multiple times for different things, but I'll, I'll check into it and send a note back.
I would appreciate that, thank you very much.
Mr. Yusefian, uh, Mr. Najarian?
Thanks, a couple of questions again, yeah, that, those, um, those repair sheets by Mr., Dr. Espiritu were interesting, I saw one in August '07, and then one in May '08, uh, with the same defect, and of course, it begs the question, was that defect, uh, existing throughout that entire, uh, nine-month period? So, uh, I mean, I, I think certainly that's your inference that you're drawing, and I'd like to know that, um, but if it's just something in August and something in May, and it passed inspections throughout, please don't, uh, don't make that inference, because I, I think that's improper to do so. If there's a September, October, November, December, January, February, et cetera, same defect noted, that's a different story. Um, but what I would like to know, as we're getting closer to the, of the bidding and the selection of our transit operator, I want to know from you, Mr. Dr. Espiritu, uh, who you recommend. I'd like you to scout out the other applicants, I don't know who they are, it's a closed process, council cannot get involved in it, uh, whether it's Leyd Law, Southland Transit, uh, whoever, give us a heads up, just don't bash MV because they're in our backyard, I'm sure other cities are using those other companies. If one of them is a great company, we wanna hear your recommendation as well on that. Um, my next comment is, um, regarding Mr. Allen, when he says the city is supporting Mr. Weaver, I'm not supporting any lawsuit that he's, uh, that he's preparing or filing, except if, if I understand you, that you're saying that by use of a computer in his office that the city is indirectly supporting that. And then I question, uh, your information that he's drafting his lawsuit himself, uh, as an engineer, although a well-educated engineer...
Thank you.
...I might add, from USC, uh, to, to file against you, that seems rather inconsistent. Clearly, I think there's a policy on using city equipment for private gain, but to draw that connection, I see a bit tenuous. Were he doing estimates on, uh, flood control channel, uh, work as a consultant on the city computer, that might be something different, but, uh, I can't imagine he's drafting his own lawsuit against you on his own computer. Uh, you know, although I have been wrong before. Um...
That's fine, I'll end it at that. Okay. Councilmember Quintero? No. Councilmember Weaver? All right. I believe that brings us to the end of the, uh...
Will we adjourn?
The agenda, I have a motion, we are adjourned at, uh, 7 o'clock.
Unbelievable.